Hi, everybody.
Hi, John.
Hey, John. Please remember to mute yourselves unless you're speaking. All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the Dunn County Board of Supervisors March Meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Bartlet?
Here.
Supervisor Hedlund?
Here.
Supervisor Score? Supervisor Steen?
Here.
Supervisor Zons?
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Maves?
Here.
Supervisor Quinn?
I'm here.
Supervisor Rogers?
Yes, here.
Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Kinnear?
Here.
Supervisor Crumry?
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese?
Here.
Supervisor Keeter? Supervisor Keeter?
Here.
Supervisor Vogel?
Here.
Supervisor McCullough?
Here.
Supervisor Story?
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff?
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Tripp?
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow?
Here.
Supervisor Jensen?
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Bauer?
Here.
Supervisor Lino?
Here.
Supervisor Hartong? Supervisor Hartong?
Here.
And Supervisor Score?
Here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. Approval of the minutes.
I so move.
Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Larry Bjork seconds. Any discussion? additions or corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes as printed, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications, we have none. Public comments. Krista, do we have any?
There was no public comment.
All right, there was one email that I had Kim forward to everybody. That was the one email that I got that didn't look like it was sent to anybody else but myself. Otherwise, the emails I got pretty much were all sent, it looked like they were sent to everybody, all the rest is supervisors. Appointments, I have two tonight. Menominee Library Board. Appoint to fill the on-expired term of Claudia Manning. Going to appoint Suzanne Gaines to that, and I need a board appointment for that, please.
All of approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Supervisor Morehouse moves, and I didn't hear, Supervisor Steen, okay, Supervisor Steen seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. The other one is a Civil Service Rating Committee, appoint to fill the unexpired term of Jess Jeff Clatt, Joel Werner from Durant. And that one's a chair approval, so. All right. Moving on, we'll move on to the report to the county manager, the COVID-19 update.
Hello, everybody. And a special good evening to everybody of Irish descent, even those people who are Irish for only one day a year. COVID-19 update, I sent out an email today. We're at forty-three hundred and ten confirmed positives for the virus in the county since the start of the pandemic. We have twenty-nine of those are active at the moment, and we have another three hundred and fifty-one that are probable. Those are people that are have tossed it positive just with the antigen test or are symptomatic but not tested. But the the good news is that we currently have no Dunn County residents in the hospital with COVID, and there have been no additional deaths reported as a result of COVID, so that's a good thing. Vaccinations in Dunn County are continuing. There are six different entities, including our own Public Health Department, that are administering vaccines. As of this morning, anyway, we've had eight thousand four hundred and thirty-five residents who have received at least one dose of the vaccine. We've administered twelve thousand seven hundred and forty total shots. About nine point five percent of the county population have had both shots so far. As far as testing for is concerned, the rate of positivity as we're doing testing is two point eight. That's that's getting down there. It's coming down. That's a very positive trend, and we hope to see that continue. I've been getting a lot of questions lately about the safety protocols we've been following at the county. When might we open the building to the public? What about, you know, are we going to continue wearing masks, etc.? The best answer I can give people is that we are looking forward to the time when we begin to relax these protocols. We are going to continue to follow the science, which is what we have done since the beginning of this. I think it's served us very well. And when the science indicates that it is begins to be safe for us to make the building open other than to appointments, just to the general public, when the science indicates that we don't need to be as cautious about wearing masks and being as worried about how many people are in a room for fifteen minutes or more. We will relax those standards, but we're not there yet. As I said, you know, at nine point five percent of the population, we're nowhere near the herd immunity that we need to be for safety's sake. But we do see it coming. The the rate of vaccinations is ramping up. There are more people are getting it, more people have expressed interest in getting the vaccine. We still have those that are cautious about it, and I think I understand where some of those people are coming from. But the hope is that in in the foreseeable future, there will come a time we can get back to kind of the pre-pandemic, more normal sorts of behavior. So that's my COVID-19 update for today. Katie Gallagher, the Director of our Public Health Department, is here. I don't know if Katie, if you have anything to add to what I've said?
Available if you guys have any questions.
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor Story.
Do we have any of the variant strains coming through our county?
So we have sent a couple samples off to be whole genome sequenced, and we have not had any comeback at this moment in time as a variant of concern. That doesn't mean necessarily that they're not here. It means that we haven't found them by test.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we will move on with the purchase orders.
You have in your packet of materials distributed for this meeting, the purchase orders of over forty thousand dollars. There's only two this month. Both are related to the Neighbors of Dunn County. One is Matrix Care, which is our annual fee for the electronic medical record software that we use at the Neighbors. The other is RF Technologies, which is the annual service agreement for our Call Light system that's utilized there at the Neighbors. So I don't know if there's any questions on those purchases?
Are there any questions? If not, we will move on to an update on the redistricting.
So I included a a staff report that I had written to the Executive Committee in your packet regarding redistricting. Following a decennial census, normally we would be getting into the redistricting process. As the new census data comes in, the county board is charged with coming up with a new supervisory district plan, establishing the number of districts, holding a public hearing on that, and then adopting that plan. We have to, in that process, work with the municipalities. It can be amended from the time it's drafted to the time it's adopted, and it's also the opportunity for the county to decide if it wants to change its size. For our communities or counties of our size, we can have up to thirty-one supervisors. There's nothing that requires us to change the number of districts, but we could if we wanted. Unfortunately, the census data is not going to be delivered in a timely fashion. At this point, it does not look like we will have it before September of this year at the earliest, and that throws everything into question as to timing, because it takes time to go through the redistricting process, the creation of the the plan, working with the municipalities and and adopting it, and then that has to be in place in time for county board elections, which are next April, not this coming April, but next April, and it does not look like that's going to happen. So we are waiting for a decision by the state as to what we are going to do, since it does not appear that we are going to have time. Any of us, not just Dunn County, but any of the counties, are going to have time to complete the redistricting process before the spring election takes place. The odds are that we will use the same districts that we did for 2010 and come up with the redistrict plan thereafter. I will also say that we have a GIS department, which will actually produce the the maps for us. The committee that will be appointed by the county board chair for redistricting will work with GIS on on those maps and and finalizing those maps. We're anticipating a committee of eight, but with county board supervisors representing different segments of the county and then working with the each of the municipalities, which in the process have sixty days, once we come up with a plan to weigh in themselves. So the process is on hold through no fault of our own. It's something that we are waiting to to hear back from the state as to when we're going to be able to go. It's premature at this point even to appoint the committee, but we will keep everybody informed once we know something. And again, if there's any questions on redistricting, I'd be happy to try to field them.
Are there any questions from any of the supervisors?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I have Supervisor Bjark and then Supervisor Kinnear.
Mr. Miller, what would happen if after redistricting, that two supervisors are in the same district? Would they just be in the same district until the next election?
Yes, quite possibly.
Okay, that's my concern. I know last time there was two, three people or.
I don't, I I don't know the the answer Supervisor Bjork as to whether or not both would be able to continue to serve, or if there's a process for determining one or the other in the case where they end up at the same. But the redistricting doesn't become official until it's adopted by the county, and I don't know what the direction from the state will be with regard to elected representatives, if we've already had our spring election and and already seated. That's part of what the state has to work through and advise us on. I'm going to turn for a moment to our county clerk, Julie Wofke. She's also been very much involved in this. I don't know if you have any other information, Julie, on this?
The only thing I would say is, in all the seminars I sat through, it likely would be that the new districts wouldn't take effect in the county board races until the next election, so therefore, but that still could change by the legislation, so.
So it is possible we would have a situation where we've got an official map. It shows one thing, but the people seated on the board are still the the version from the twenty-two election, however that works out.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kinnear?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Bjork referred to this, but I was wondering, for example, ten years ago, did the districts change a great deal?
They they changed enough that in Supervisor Johnson's area, we ended up with two supervisors in the same district. I believe that was the only one ten years ago that that happened to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to county treasurer search.
I believe you're all aware that Doris Meyer, our county treasurer, turned in a letter of resignation. Her last day will be April two. We are sorry to see Doris go. She's been very competent and efficient in performing the duties of treasurer for Dunn County. We're happy for her because, you know, she took advantage of an opportunity that came her way, and as we are always happy when people move on to something that's going to improve their their situation. But we are finding it interesting. So far, we have not gotten many applicants for the treasurer position. We had tentatively scheduled interviews of interested candidates for March twenty-fifth in front of the Committee on Administration with that committee meeting at its regular time at three-thirty on that day, where we were hoping to have completed those interviews and have that committee make a recommendation. The board is able to appoint a successor to fill the unexpired term of the county treasurer, and we were hoping to do that at the April meeting to minimize the gap between Doris's departure and when a new person might come on board. But it remains to see whether or not we will have a sufficient number of candidates to meet that schedule, or if we have to push it back. The other part, of course, somewhat related, is subsequent to this packet going out. We received the sad news that our county clerk is also departing. Julie Wofke is moving on to a better, bigger, better things, and we wish her well, but we are very sad to see her go as well. We've all come to to know and respect Julie, and her absence will be keenly felt. So we are going, we are kicking off the same process for county clerk, kind of a double whammy for us, but we certainly do not hold it against Doris nor Julie for moving on. We have not yet posted the opening for interested persons in county clerk. Julie's last day is going to be the fifteenth of April, I believe, and we will move as quickly as we can trying to find qualified candidates and get them in front of the board as well. So that's the update.
Supervisor Steen?
Yes, Paul, assuming that you're unable to fill the either job in a timely fashion, who would assume the duties of the treasurer or clerk in the interim?
We, in both cases, we do have a deputy, we have a deputy treasurer and a deputy clerk, and we will be working with each of them to give them the support they need to be able to hopefully tide us over in the interim.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. I can only see part of the screen. I want to remind people of that, so if I if I don't see a, please say something. All right, moving on to nine reports of departments. We've got three, three reports tonight, Circuit Court, CJCC, and the District Attorney. Quite detailed reports is, if there's any questions. I don't know if any of them are on tonight, but Mr. Miller could take those questions and direct them so we can get answers if there are any questions.
We do have Sarah Benedict, the Director of our CJCC, is here tonight.
Sarah's here if there's any questions on that report.
Supervisor, can you hear?
Yes, Supervisor Kinnear, go ahead.
I don't really have any questions for this. I just want to say it's quite the report, country handsome, and it's amazing the things that they're doing. I I noticed that another county is copying some of the things we're doing, but I just want to compliment them. They're doing a fantastic job, and they communicated it in a really good way with their report.
Well, thank you, and I I would totally agree with you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I see none. So we will move on to ten. Consideration of resolutions, reports, and ordinances from the standing committees. Ten A from the Committee on Administration, the ordinance amending the County Code of Ordnances, Section three sixteen-three regarding employee compensation. Now, this is the second reading. So are there any questions on this before we vote? Any comments from anyone? I see none, hear none. All right, all in favor of the ordinance amending the County Code of Ordnances signified by saying that, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to ten B from the Health and Human Services Board, a resolution in support of additional funding for the ADRC. I need a motion for this.
Supervisor Morehouse moves approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Speaking to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my colleagues know, Aging and Disability Resource Centers around the state, including our own ADRC, are the really the principal sources of support for senior citizens and people with disabilities. And as we all know, this is the fastest growing population in the state. Here in Dunn County, adults sixty years of age and older, many of us, that is, represent twenty-four percent of the population, and over thirty percent of Dunn County seniors sixty-five years of age and older also have some kind of disability. And the demand then for the kinds of services provided by the ADRC are are increasing. So supporting this increase in the state's biennial budget is is just necessary to help us meet these increasing needs. The funding method for the ADRCs around the state hasn't been looked at or changed in over a decade, and the funding, state funding for these vital services has not increased since two thousand and six. So the committee hopes that the supervisors will approve this resolution for increased funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other speaking to or against or questions? I see none, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution passes. Moving on to ten C from the Executive Committee, a resolution approving the FY twenty-twenty carryforwards and the FY twenty-twenty-one budget adjustments. Quite lengthy, lots of good background there. We have our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Stri with us if there are any questions, or if he would like to speak to anything, note anything on this. Oh, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I need a motion. Supervisor McCullough moves. Supervisor Hedlund seconds. All right, now.
Keith, go ahead. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologize for that. Just in summary, especially for those that are new to the county board, this is an annual year-end process, which are called the carryforwards, and it's really to move forward from the prior fiscal year, unused funds for projects that weren't completed into the current year to be able to finish those projects. If you read the narratives and so on, you can see many times either projects are delayed for various reasons, or grants are awarded late in a year, and they overlap fiscal years, so this formalizes that authority to move those forward. In addition to that, there were two departments, Public Health and Environmental Services, that received a grish additional grant dollars for twenty-twenty-one, so those are also included in this. Adoption of this resolution tonight would increase the twenty-twenty-one budget by one million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, but has no impact on tax levy for this year. So with that, I'd recommend your approval.
Are there any questions? From anyone? Supervisor Lino, you have a question?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Oh. I saw your mic come off, and I I thought maybe you were ready. Okay, if not, this is a roll call vote, and so we'll have the clerk take the roll.
Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Zons?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Robert Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Hartong?
Yes.
Supervisor Hedlund?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kinnear?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Score?
Yes.
And Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to ten C two is a resolution proclaiming April as the National County Government Month. Can I have a motion on this, please? Supervisor Johnson moves. Supervisor McCullough seconds. Pretty much self-explanatory. This is something we've done every year. Is there any speaking to this? Background is there? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving on to ten D from the Facilities Committee. A resolution approving policies, procedures, and guidelines for the twenty-twenty-one racing season at Red Cedars Raceway. I need a motion. Supervisor Maves moves. Supervisor, didn't catch who that was?
Bauer.
Oh, Supervisor Bauer, okay, seconds. All right. Speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Maves, do you want to start it?
Yes, thank you.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, yes, all you members were presented with this resolution and a support documentation that went with it. And this was a lengthy compromise between the Racing Association, Red Cedar Racing and K T for the from the county. And I would like to congratulate both parties. They both put in a lot of time and effort. And it came before the Facilities Committee and was discussed and was moved on. And I think it's a prime example of how we can open up the county and still guarantee the the safety of the residents at the same time. There was, like I say, a lot of compromise back and forth and they finally came up with a document here that I that I am going to support wholeheartedly and I hope you will too. Mark Thomas is available for questions if there are any questions. So at this time, if you do have any specific questions, let me know.
All right, are there any questions? We have Mark with us and K T and Chuck can always answer questions. Supervisor Lynn, Lynn O.
Okay, I have a question. There's a lot of data in this information that I received and looked at it. And I was just wondering if are they proposing to open up the grandstands and the whole pit program at a hundred percent?
Go ahead Supervisor Maves.
Yeah, that would go off. This is all based on the chart that's on page two there that where it talks about. As far as if if the testing on on the the Wednesday before, depending where the testing comes in at will determine how many people can be in the stands. So so it it can change from week to week, but the on Wednesday, the determination will be made as to the occupancy available for on the following Friday.
All right. Supervisor Jensen, did you have a question?
I was Supervisor Niehoff.
Oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Niehoff. Well, on my screen, you're right next to each other.
I I just wanted to make a couple of points and one of the points I know Chuck touched on about the Red Cedar Racing Association has worked closely with K T Gallagher. And you will see that on the second chart and Chuck talked about that too. And what this is going to be is it's going to be ongoing throughout the racing season. What they're going to do is they're going to touch base every week with the the Health Department to see what the number of active daily cases are. And the number of active daily cases is going to determine what the capacity is going to be for that week at the Red Cedar Speedway. That's one point that I wanted to make. The second point that I wanted to make, and I know that reading the email that Dave sent out to everybody, there was a question on how is this going to be enforced and security associated with this? Well, I don't know if everybody knows or not, but the the Red Cedar Racing Association has an agreement with the Dunn County Sheriff Department. And every night that there are races, there are active Dunn County Sheriff Officers at the track and in the pit area during that race and even after the race. So they would be the ones that would be able to enforce whether it be there to see people sitting closely together or whether or not they, you know, people have consumed too much alcohol, whether or not underage drinking is starting to occur. Dunn County Sheriff is there every week that the races take place so that the enforcement is not going to be an issue.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Steen? You're muted, Gary. Gary, you're muted.
Pardon me.
There you go.
I'd like to thank both parties for a good faith effort to reach an agreement that benefits all parties. Thank you for your hard work.
Anybody else? Supervisor. Supervisor, okay Supervisor Kinnear first and then Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I support this and I have to echo what was what Supervisor Steen said. I think this is a good opportunity for the Racing Association and Mark Thomas to really encourage the fans and so forth to get vaccinated because that's going to help put fans in the stands. So that that can be another push for vaccinations in a another, a different group. So it would be very helpful and nice job.
Supervisor Bjork?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the vote last year was close and controversial, could we have a roll call vote when it's when it comes time to vote?
If that's what you're asking for, yes, we can.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions, comments? Like I say, I only see about half this, half the amount of people. So if there's another question, please say something. I don't want to miss somebody.
Larry Bjork has a question.
Larry, okay, go ahead, Larry.
I support the the work that's been done also. And I guess as much as anything, I see it as a gateway of doing things right. Starting to bring things back to normal. I'm not a real active race fan, but I am a real active Dunn County Fair fan. You know, as things move on, I just hope that we can build on other activities at the rec park and involve, you know, more citizens of Dunn County and you know, be, you know, be in a community of inclusion and it might not be your cup of tea, but it is your neighbor's cup of tea. He really loves it. And that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Lino, did you have another comment or question?
I'm cautiously optimistic on this plan as I look at it closer.
Supervisor Rogers?
I would just say that that through the committee and with all the work they've done, I I really do support this. And I do, as Larry said, see it as a step forward to get things starting and move in the right direction. Thank you to the racing and the K T for the work they did.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? I don't see anymore, so we will have the clerk call the roll.
Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Trip?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermuilen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Zons?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson recorded as yes Supervisor Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer recorded as yes Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork recorded as yes Larry Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork recorded as yes Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese recorded as yes Supervisor Hardtong?
Yes.
Supervisor Hardtong recorded as yes Supervisor Headland?
Yes.
Supervisor Headland recorded as yes Supervisor Jensen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen recorded as yes Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson recorded as yes Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy recorded as yes Supervisor Kinnear?
Yes.
Supervisor Kinnear recorded as yes Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry recorded as yes Supervisor Keeter?
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Keeter recorded as yes Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino recorded as yes Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves recorded as yes Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough recorded as yes Supervisor Morehouse?
No.
Supervisor Morehouse recorded as no. Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff recorded as yes Supervisor Prochnow?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow recorded as yes Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn recorded as yes Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers recorded as yes Supervisor Score?
Yes.
Supervisor Score recorded as yes Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Steen recorded as yes Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett recorded as yes.
All right, the resolution passes. Moving on to ten E from the Planning Resource Development Committee. An ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning map from the town of Red Cedar. And I need a motion to this Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Gary Bjork seconds speaking to the resolution Supervisor Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, this is a parcel in the town of Red Cedar that was mistakenly classified as residential when the zoning map was last revised. It's owned by a business, I think it's Cedar Falls. And they noticed this and asked us to correct the the designation to commercial, general commercial. The committee had a public hearing on it. There's no opposition to it. The town has indicated that they support that change. So we're recommending to the board that it be approved.
Any questions? Other speaking to or against? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. Ten F is from the Highway Committee. Ordinance amending section eighteen point oh four five of the Dunn County Code of Ordnance related to the ATV routes. This is the first reading. I need a motion for this. Supervisor McCullough moves Supervisor Johnson seconds. Speaking to this Supervisor McCullough?
Um, so this is a resolution that we bring forward every year. The process runs roughly. The ATV associations come to us and they ask us to open sections up on the county roads for ATV use. We evaluate them on a series of safety criteria, including average daily number of trips, distance on the county road, et cetera. We try to keep the segments for this relatively short on county roads with them on on private land or township roads by preference. This year, the process was a little bit longer than usual, so I'm having amendment here when I get done with my speaking. We just this year went through and very carefully reevaluated the safety criteria we used to see how the performance has been on the roads to date. So that's the basic uh, motion and I'm happy to answer questions on that before we move on to the the brief amendment.
Supervisor Bjork?
Go ahead Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Can the ATVs use the county roads before the signage goes up?
Uh, no, they cannot.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, you have a amendment you would like to propose?
I would. Let me give you a brief rundown of why why we have the amendment. This year, the process took a little bit longer because we need a reassessment of our safety criteria, as I mentioned, and rather than getting this all done at one or two meetings, we came back to it five or six times. So we had a little bit of miscommunication in the drafting of the ordinance. This amendment is to correct two minor mistakes for segments of road that respectively were not approved by the committee and were approved by the committee. So you all have that in your packet, but I can read that aloud if if that would be the best procedure.
Yes, go ahead and read your amendment.
All right. Uh, motion to amend the proposed ordinance in two places. First, by deleting County Road E in the town of Springbrook from seven thirtieth Street North to seven thirtieth Street South. Uh, that one has, I believe, in too high an ADT. And then the second part of the amendment would be by adding County Road H in town of Springbrook, the Caryville Bridge. Uh, this latter is a one year provisional approval to make sure that it's going to work out all right. It's got a higher traffic count than we would normally be happy with, but it is basically the only theater in that place. So we'd really like to get that opened up for the ATV trails. And that is my amendment.
Thank you. I need a second to that amendment. Supervisor Prochnow seconds. Any questions on the amendment?
Supervisor Bauer, Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Bauer, go ahead.
Um, will this be a first reading on this one as well or does this one go through as is tonight?
It's a first reading on the complete amendment or complete ordinance. And if we amend it, it'll be a first reading on the amended complete ordinance. Unless we decide before we vote to waive the second reading. And there was a little bit of question about that, but we would have to we would have to take that up after this amendment. Any questions on the amendment? Any discussion? If not, we're going to vote on just the amendment. Deleting the County Road E part and adding the County Road H Caryville Bridge. So everybody understand that it's just on the amendment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The amendment carries. So now we're back to the ordinance as amended. There was a little bit of discussion and that's why I bring it up about waiving the second reading. And there's a way to do that if we wanted to get these trails opened in time for the spring. Otherwise, it would last, it would wait for one more month. So I'm just bringing that up because there was discussion at Executive Committee on that. Right. If we had a motion to suspend the rules, it would take a two thirds majority vote of the county board to suspend those rules. Supervisor Steen?
I so move. I second.
Supervisor Jensen seconds. All right. I think Supervisor Rogers?
I always question why we change the rules and for the reason that we're changing them. So I support the amendment in general, but is it really necessary to move it forward that fast? I guess I'd just like someone to tell me why it's so important.
My own opinion, uh, maybe not. But if I was a ATV rider and waiting for it to open and the trails opened before our next county board meeting in April, I would wish we had done this. So so I I I'm not, I'm not trying to talk people into it. I'm just, you know, I was bringing it up because it was discussed. Any other discussion? Supervisor.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question for Supervisor McCullough. Do you feel real confident that the language in here now is all accurate and correct and what you would end up with if you took another month to study it?
Absolutely. We, like I said, we discussed this over about five meetings and really the only reason we had to make the amendment was because of some miscommunication in the drafting process. And really, the only reason we had to make the amendment was because of some miscommunication in the drafting process. Um, we're we we had some fairly extensive discussions about it and um I had a nice long conversation with uh with Director Sworowski. And we reviewed a bunch of the video, and I think this is exactly what we would have ended up with.
Supervisor Jensen, did you have a question? I saw a hand up down there in that corner.
Um, no, no, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Score, I guess, right below you on my screen. Go ahead Supervisor Score. Is this going to be connecting pretty much a lot of the dead ends that they have in the townships?
That is the goal. Um typically, we only open up a segmented trail um if it is a connector between uh either private and township roads or township township roads. Um, we don't open up really under other circumstances.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Calabrese, go ahead.
Uh for Mr. McCullough, is there any concern with the Highway Department um about a month earlier in terms of anything that they do when spring comes on the sides of the road or putting signs up or clearing things away with more traffic? Would it would one month earlier make a difference to Mr. Sworowski or anybody?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Larry Bjork, go ahead.
Um, this is the what we're talking about right now is just the use of using the the bridge at Caryville on H. Is that correct?
That is just one portion of it. The rest of it was in your packet of the ordinance, the complete ordinance. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to suspend the rules. It's got to be two-thirds vote. So I think we will have a roll call vote to uh find that out. If we're if we're done with the questions, we will go ahead with that vote on suspending the rules for it having a second reading. So go ahead.
Supervisor Trip?
Yes.
Supervisor Trip recorded as yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen recorded as yes. Supervisor Vogel?
Yes.
Supervisor Vogel recorded as yes. Supervisor Zanz?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanz recorded as yes. Supervisor Anderson?
Yes.
Supervisor Anderson recorded as yes. Supervisor Bauer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer recorded as yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Yes.
Supervisor Larry Bjork recorded as yes. Supervisor Calabrese?
Yes.
Supervisor Calabrese recorded as yes. Supervisor Hartung?
Yes.
Supervisor Hartung recorded as yes. Supervisor Headland?
Yes.
Supervisor Headland recorded as yes. Supervisor Jensen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jensen recorded as yes. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson recorded as yes. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy recorded as yes. Supervisor Kinnear?
Yes.
Supervisor Kinnear recorded as yes. Supervisor Crumry?
Yes.
Supervisor Crumry recorded as yes. Supervisor Keeter?
Uh, yeah.
Was that a yes?
Supervisor Keeter, that's twice. We didn't quite hear your answer.
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Keeter recorded as yes. Supervisor Lino?
Yes.
Supervisor Lino recorded as yes. Supervisor Maves?
Yes.
Supervisor Maves recorded as yes. Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough recorded as yes. Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes.
Supervisor Morehouse recorded as yes. Supervisor Niehoff?
Yes.
Supervisor Niehoff recorded as yes. Supervisor Prochnow?
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow recorded as yes. Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn recorded as yes. Supervisor Rogers?
Nay.
Supervisor Rogers recorded as no. Supervisor Score?
Yes.
Supervisor Score recorded as yes. Supervisor Steen?
Yes.
Supervisor Steen recorded as yes. Supervisor Story?
Yes.
Supervisor Story recorded as yes. Chairman Bartlett?
Yes.
Chairman Bartlett recorded as yes.
Okay, suspending the rules passes. Yeah. I just, I while we were voting, I was I was thinking of a a better answer for Mr. Rogers when he asked the question about why we would suspend the rules for this at this time. We would normally start working on this in about October if I'm correct, usually in the fall. And it would take a couple of months and it this would have all been done by now. That gives the clubs time to figure out where they are to get their signs, to mark the trails, maybe uh have maps printed and whatever. So it's it is helpful for the clubs that we have done this. And I I think that would be a a better answer than what I think.
Now they need to vote on that.
So now we have to vote on the ordinance as amended and the second it's it is not a second reading. It will not come back again. Uh so any questions on this? If not, all in favor, say aye of the ordinance as amended.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. Announcement, um March 29th, we have that special budget meeting. I'm going to call it a budget meeting. Because it is, it's it's dealing with the budget. Um, any questions on that? It's at 7:00 PM. It's in your packet at the bottom under announcements. Our next regular county board meeting will be April 21st, 2021. And our March 29th uh meeting will be the last meeting that Julie will be uh helping with the attending the meeting with us. And uh both Doris and Julie will be gone by the time we have our next regular county board meeting. So I wish them thanks. Uh thank you for all they've done for Dunn County and I'll I'll probably say that again at the next meeting too. So are there any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Morehouse?
Uh, our Health Department Director KT Gallagher is here and would like to make an announcement if that's all right.
All right.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to share with you that we will have a a quicker opening of the next eligibility phase, which will likely, if you're not already eligible, you will likely be eligible. It includes um a broad array of underlying health conditions, including asthma, diabetes type one and two, and um something that's pretty common in Wisconsin, uh overweight with a BMI of 25 or better. And so for somebody who's 5'10", that's 175 pounds or more. And for somebody who is uh 5'5", that's going to be 150 pounds or more. So just to kind of give you some perspective, it's likely that you're eligible and folks within your circles are also eligible.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kinnear, you were going to say something? Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to thank KT and Chuck and Mark. Uh, thank KT, Chuck and Mark for making the Red Cedar Racing vote way easier this year. Good job.
Yes, yes, it was. Thank you. Any other announcements? Supervisor Headland?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just like to let everyone know that uh uh after having a meeting with the uh uh CDBG Director in Chippewa Falls, uh which is also directs the Dunn County area, uh CDBG funds, decided that we needed a direct link on our website. So when the people can look on the Dunn County website, they can find that that those services are available. When they click on that, they will be directed to go to to that office and and get their information. But uh up to this point, uh it's one thing that came by our meeting was that uh too many people had said they were unaware, also thought that maybe that was just for Chippewa County. And that we didn't have uh any place to go to for uh those services in Dunn County. So thank you to uh Krista for uh setting that up today already. And uh should show up under services on the Dunn County website.
Mr. Chair, I have one as well.
Uh Supervisor, I didn't know who that was. Supervisor Story? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, recently attended a a meeting, a WCA meeting last Monday, and I guess I just want to lift up for everyone. I believe there was an email about it, but there will be a legislative uh hearing uh uh on the budget that will actually be at UW Stad on April 22nd. So just uh put that on your calendars as well.
Any other discussion or announcements? Excuse me. I don't see any others. I don't hear any others from the ones that I don't see. So thank you for everyone that's attended. The public, thank you for Mr. Thomas also attending and all our staff. And we will see you on March 29th. Thank you. Bye all. Thank you. Bye. Stay well.